Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. We'll start tonight's meeting. There's no public comment. Number six on, excuse me, number five on the agenda will be the adoption resolution clarifying results of the April 1st, 2025 election. The resolution certifying the canvassing of April 1st, 2025 election returns for LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120, be it resolved by the Board of Education, LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120, LaSalle and Bureau Counties, Illinois, hereafter referred to as the Board, as follows: Whereas, the Board has accepted the canvassed returns of the judges and election authority of the election held on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Whereas upon such canvass, it was found that returns of said election showed the following number of votes were cast: All four-year terms, Christine Krasniak Incorporated, 4,672 votes, Gary Ferrari Incorporated, 4,697 votes, Sam V. Sankovich Incorporated, 4,121 votes, and Carol Elkhorn, unincorporated, 4,597 votes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board as follows, that the returns of the judges and the election authority be approved and that Christine Krasniak, Gary Ferrari, and Carol Elkhorn be declared members of the Board of Education to a four-year term. The resolution, we fully enforced upon the adoption, adopted this 23rd day of April, 2025, by the following rule call of votes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations. At this time, we have the oath of office for newly elected members. Yep, so. Mrs. Reva will provide your copies.
You can come over here, Chris.
You can come over here.
Come on over. You're one of us now.
You're one of us. We'll be here.
Yeah. Stand in the middle, you dance.
School Board Member, Oath of Office, I.
I, Gary Ferrari.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Members of the Board of Education.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education.
Or the Board of School Directors of LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
Of LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that I shall represent taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of school district assets.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As a part of the Board of Education or Board of School Board of Directors, as the case may be, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall expect the responsibility of my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and environmental design to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as an education's key advocate in behalf of the students and our community's school or schools to advance the vision of LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's school to advance the vision for LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120.
I shall strive to work together with the school's district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision that the Board has created and fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic success, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations.
This is my pouty face.
At this time, I would like to adjourn, signed I. So thank you, Mr. Murbach, Dr. Lynch, Mrs. Krasniak. Welcome you to the board table. Your nameplate is in, we're in the process of getting it, so you'll have some time for next meeting.
I wonder how large and beautiful it was that wrote that.
I know, right?
I think he's born in a barn.
Okay, I would now like to ask the Board for a motion to appoint me as the President pro temp.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Mrs. Jennifer Reva as Secretary pro temp. So moved. Second. Rule call.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. So nominations are now in order for the Office of Presidents. Is there a nomination for Board Presidents?
I would like to nominate Mr. Greg Sarver for Board President.
Thank you. Is there another nomination for Board Presidents? And I'll ask one last time, are there any other nominations for Board President? And I'll ask one last time, are there any other nominations for Board President? By acclamation, Mr. President, you've been reelected, or, Mr. Sarver, you've been elected as President of the Board. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have nominations, if there are any, for Vice President of the Board.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Taliani.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board? One last time, are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board? To proclamation, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Taliani, Vice President of the School Board.
Thank you.
I need a motion to appoint Ms. Jennifer Reva, Board of Education Secretary.
Second.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
I need a motion for appointment of Mrs. Lori Whalen, Board of Education Treasurer. I didn't see it. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for appointment of the Zukalski Law Office, the District Legal Counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of appointment of Mrs. Jennifer Does, IMRF Authorized Agent.
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of appointment of Mrs. Carrie Malani, County, excuse me, Activity Fund Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Okay.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I need a motion of appointment of the following district depositories, as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of approval for LaSalle News Tribune as a designated newspaper for official publications. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of approval for the 2025-2026 Regular Board of Education Meeting, dates, times, and locations.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion of approval to readopt Board of Education Policy Manual.
Second.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. All right. Under new business 9.1, I need a motion to adopt the proclamation recognizing retiring Board members Matt Murbach and Dr. Rosemary Lynch after the reading of the proclamation. LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 proclamation, LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 Board of Education is proud to honor Mr. Matt Murbach upon his retirement from the Board of Education, and whereas Mr. Murbach has been a devoted member of the Board of Education for the past five years dedicating countless volunteer hours, and whereas Mr. Murbach has demonstrated sound and constant leadership while serving as a member of the Board, and whereas Mr. Murbach has provided exceptional stewardship of the community's financial resources while serving as the Chair of the Financial Committee, and whereas Mr. Murbach has supported the students and staff of LP through his decisions directly impacting the quality of life within the school, now therefore be it resolved that LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 Board of Education has hereby recognized Mr. Matt Murbach for his enduring service and commitment to LP dated this 23rd day of April, 2025. Okay, proclamation number two, LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 proclamation, LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 Board of Education is proud to honor Dr. Rosemary Lynch upon her retirement from the Board of Education, and whereas Dr. Lynch has been a devoted member of the Board of Education for the past 40 years dedicating countless volunteer hours, and whereas Dr. Lynch has demonstrated sound and constant leadership while serving as a member of the Board, and whereas Dr. Lynch has provided exceptional stewardship with serving as the President of the Board from 1991 to 1994, and whereas Dr. Lynch has provided incomparable guidance while serving as the Chair of the Programs Committee, and whereas Dr. Lynch has supported the students and staff of LP through decisions directing, directly impacting quality of life within the school, now therefore be it resolved that LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School District 120 Board of Education does hereby recognize Dr. Rosemary Lynch for her enduring service and commitment to LP dated this 23rd day of April, 2025. And just as, just as a footnote, for Dr. Lynch, her tenure spanned from 1985 to this year, 2025, which is 40 years, and based on IASB records, Dr. Lynch is in the top 10 longest-serving Board members in state history. She was Board President, like we said earlier, from 1991 to 1994. She's a highly celebrated IVCC professor, longstanding president of Food Pantry Board, and strong advocate advancing females in math and STEM programs. Dr. Lynch, congratulations. Now, I need that motion. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Okay, we have some gifts. We have some gifts for you, and we wanted to take some photos. That's Rose. All right, Matt, would you like to come up? We have the historic gift. You have to open it here, of course.
Of course, total embarrassment. Thank you so much. Thank you. Can I open that right here? What is it, Gary?
Are you golfing?
Thank you.
That's pretty awesome.
Dr. Lynch.
Put that in your office.
Yeah.
Rose. Congratulations. It's not ticking.
Pretty bold. And my box is gold. Oh my goodness. Oh, you have got to see this because.
That's perfect.
The porch is a legend.
Porch is a legend.
On my porch with my little dog.
Very well done.
This is priceless.
That's awesome.
Isn't that something? I probably won't be able to mount it, but thank you so much. Wow, is that cool? That is so cool.
They're doing a picture, Rosie.
I'm gonna have to see that Sarver goes to more Cub games.
Oh.
He was at the game last year.
I know, and they won. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, he went last year, and they won also.
Yeah.
He's an unwilling luck charm.
Yeah, because he's a Dodgers fan, isn't he?
He was. He drew for the Dodgers.
Okay, I'll talk fast.
I don't believe you. Oh.
I'd like to call the order, regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. Rule call, please.
Mr. Posetto? Mrs. Alford? Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Here.
Mr. Ferrari?
Here.
Mr. Sarver?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, perfect.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. At this time, I'd like the members of the Board of Education to look over the regular minutes from the meeting on March 19th, 2025. If there are no additions or corrections, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alford?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasniak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Tonight, under recognitions and comments from visitors, for recognitions, we have Mrs. Lori Reese, who is a Administrative Assistant in our attendance office. She was nominated by Ms. Kate Lance and Mr. Jason Miller. They said that Mrs. Reese constantly demonstrates exceptional dedication affecting this in her current role, making her invaluable asset to our school. Mrs. Reese is known for being unwavering reliability and strong work ethic. Her attention to detail and commitment to accuracy has significantly contributed to the smooth operation of the attendance office. Mrs. Reese builds a welcoming, respectful atmosphere. Her patience and kindness makes her approachable to all, and she consistently treats everyone with the utmost respect. LaSalle-Pour-Tonship High School undoubtedly benefits from having Mrs. Lori Reese as an appointed position in the attendance program. Mrs. Reese. Come up and meet the Board. We'll start that in right there.
Steve, do you want me to?
Congratulations.
You are invaluable.
Oh, thank you.
Very well. Invaluable. Steve, do you want me to go over the Finance Committee?
I was going to, if you want to.
Yeah. I can do it. When I forget some, when I forget something, you can jump in.
You're gonna, you're gonna do it?
I'll do it.
Perfect.
When he walked out, I was like, whoa.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
I know, until he walked out. And I went.
Good, good call, Steve.
All right.
Tonight, under Division Spotlight, we have our Mathematics Division, and we have Mrs. Katie Monhan as the teacher, and tonight's focus is going to be on. And tonight's focus is gonna be on, uh, the new software program called Alex. This is Monhan. And you can introduce your young student.
Oh, this is Vika Bassador. She has been my student for two years, just not this year, so the last two years. Um, and she's actually, I'm gonna throw out cattle care here, she's actually my cattle care.
Okay.
Little mentee, so we have been working together quite a bit. So, Alex program, uh, the earlier this school year, we sat down with Dr. Gibson to try and find programs that would benefit some of our students. Filling gaps, practicing ACT, we didn't know ACT at the time, SAT, all of that. So we have Alex here. Currently, it is used in pre-algebra one, two foundations and essentials, which are our lowest level courses. One hour a week minimum, we can do more. This course, or this program, um, can be used as a full course. It is used in colleges kind of sometimes for the entire course. I do know, um, Mrs. Kurtz, her son, for example, has an entire math course in Alex. I actually had a student from ten years ago contact me, 'cause he went back to school and wanted help. And his, his is in Alex, and he had no idea what he was doing. We use it as a supplement, so we get our hour, hour and a half a week, um, boosting where we can. I know in my classes, and I am the foundations of math up there, we do twenty to thirty minutes, two to three times a week to hit our hour. Whereas, Vika does, what do you do?
I do twelve minutes a day.
Twelve minutes every day, so like a bell ringer type thing, um, in their class, so it varies. Seven to ten topics per week is the, uh, preferred to try to hit your goal. Again, this is a program, different courses are offered, so my students are in a pre-algebra course. Vika is in it, do you know what you're in? I didn't.
Pre-algebra two.
Well, th- not that course, I'm in, in Alex, do you know what course you're in? I didn't, I didn't tell you in this one before.
Wait. I actually don't.
She's in an RTI course, which is a little lower than my pre-algebra course. Um, and each course in the program has a different number of topics. So my students have three hundred and twenty-four topics to learn over the course of the year. Thus, they say seven to ten topics per week will get you where you need to be. Uh, my kids, we do closer to seven, just because of the style of the topics, whereas Vika has to get through how many a week?
Ten.
Ten. So it varies by teacher, by course, all of that. Um, if you can see the picture up there, I know it's a little awkward, that is a screenshot of one of my students. Again, my course in Alex has three hundred and twenty-four topics, and we've been doing it since September eleventh. And this child has finished two hundred and fifty-one topics. Um, he's totally maxed out, integers, fractions, again, it's a screenshot, there is an arrow you could go over. It tells me he's ready to learn sixty-one topics, he's already learned twenty-nine, and he's mastered two hundred and twenty-two. And to master a topic, this is a wonderful spiral review, it's gonna keep them answering similar questions over and over and over. Um, so I can go through and see what he's ready to learn, what he's learned, very individualized. This is just their basic entry website here. It is an adaptive learning program. So I'm gonna let Vika kinda talk about the adaptive part, if she's okay with that. Go ahead.
Okay, so basically, before I knew about Alex, I was doing iXL. And I feel like Alex would be more of a better option, because it gives you like a one-on-one learning, uh, advantage, I'd say, 'cause like, it gives you like topics off of what your learning levels are. And iXL, on the other hand, doesn't, it just gives you things for you to do. And this is less stressful, in my opinion, 'cause you're not losing points, you're not losing anything, because it, this gives you videos, it gives you, um, it tells you like, other ways to fix your mistakes. And for me, it's helping a lot, 'cause it's just easier, less stressful. And I feel like it's helping a lot of other kids, obviously, if you see that one kid.
Can you pause the video, rewind it, and listen to it again?
Yeah. And that helps me a lot, and if you put effort into it, then you're gonna obviously learn better. And if you're not putting effort into it, then, you know.
Are you working on the same topics as your classmates?
No, you can pick whatever topic you want to work on. And then it goes, it, the thing goes off of what you're more good at, basically.
I'm gonna clarify a little bit, the thing she's talking about is that colorful pie. Uh, so when you first start the program, you take what's called a knowledge check, which is an actual like test. And then, there is an I don't know button, but we try really, really hard not to hit the I don't know button. So then, it'll go through, and it creates a learning path for the students. And from there, you can stay on that path. You, if you wanna be straight and narrow, you can be straight and narrow, it'll keep re- rechecking you, reteaching you, teaching you new topics. Or, you can skip around and say, oh, maybe I really like purple. What, what topic in math is purple gonna cover, I wanna fill my purple slice. As the teacher, there are times where I let the students go, they have twenty minutes on Alex, do whatever they want. And personally, I'm gonna throw in a PEG analogy, I really hated running the mile, but if I just got to go run with my headphones, I enjoyed it so much more. And I have found that, too, if you just let them go, they're gonna pick something they wanna work on. There have also been times that I've said, no, guys, we're actually gonna work on decimals today, I need you to go to your decimal slice. So it's very adaptable. Adaptable to each student, I just wanted to make sure I didn't hit or miss anything. Um, as Vika mentioned, iXL got a little stressful for her, a little frustrating. Uh, this program will give each student only three to five questions per topic, that's it. Um, so there's, it doesn't really stress them out, they miss the first one, they watch the video, miss the second video, or miss the second question, they ask for help. Third one, they get, they get a little like celebration on their screen, they keep going, they finish the topic. If they're on that topic for a while, the computer actually says, it's time to take a break. And gives them the little, little cue, okay, pick a different topic, go get help elsewhere, breathe and come back. So it, it does work with them nicely. We'll come back. Okay. Um, due to this, we have some goals for the future. We are hoping to increase the usage to include all Algebra I students, not just our foundations, pre-algebra classes. Because we have found that it is wonderful spiral review. I have so many kids, you have a knowledge check every topics, every few, so many topics, and so many of them say, oh, I did this last time. Yes, you cannot forget it, guys, you need to be able to use what you've learned and build on that. I even had a student today in a knowledge check say, oh, I have to be rechecked on these topics, 'cause I forgot them. Yes, yes, you do. Beautiful built-in spiral retention. I have a lot of my kids get through some of these topics before I teach them. So they'll come back and say, oh, I remember, I did this in Alex like three weeks ago. And then we can adapt my lesson based on what they already know. It fills a lot of gaps, we have a lot of students coming in that are a little behind, and therefore, we can have our curriculum. And then, like I said, I can choose certain pie slices to say, we're gonna work on these today, they're at a different little bit of a level for the students. It works, these are all the reports I get. As the teacher, I can see their pie, I can see all my student pies, and I get a class pie chart. So, in my third hour class of those three hundred and twenty-four topics, I can see my one student had two hundred and fifty-some. I can see as a class, though, we're at, I think we're in the upper one-nineties as a class. So I can see where individualized. I can see progress learning, how much they've learned since the last knowledge check. Time versus topic, how many topics did they learn in their time, are they just staring at an open computer screen, or are they actually working? I can see their actual questions, their answers, how far they know in each slice. As you saw, or as I mentioned, if you couldn't see, my one student was ready to learn twenty-two topics. I can look at all of the ready-to-learns and say, okay, in class today, I'm gonna teach this, this lesson, because all of you are ready to learn it. You have the pre-knowledge set up. Quick tables are those basic math facts, be like timed add, subtract, multiply, divide, those drills that we all really weren't a fan of growing up, they're online now, make it a little, little different, little easier. Uh, I can assign different assignments to students on the program, and I can make it adaptable, so I can give Vika a different assignment from a different student. Same length of assignment, maybe they both have five questions, but I can adapt the assignments for differentiation purposes. And there's an IEP report, so our special ed teachers with case minute, like case, cases and all of that, you can track your progress here. So you can help your students grow that way as well. Um, I sent out a review to my students, a little Google form, and I asked them a bunch of questions, but one that I put up in particular was rate the level of hardness, 'cause I said there are different courses you can put them in. And I, this is our first pilot year, put my students in the pre-algebra class. So I wasn't sure how it was gonna go. I said, one is too hard, five is too easy. And the vast majority of my students said that I, the course I have them in is a three. Which to me says I have them in the right course, it's, it's challenging, but it's not too much for them. Would you agree? Also, I think, you, did you move, do you move classes? As teachers, we can move them, so I know some teachers, Ms. May in particular, started her kids really low, and you can move them up as they go through topics and build some confidence as well.
Oh, yeah, I did actually move up, I was in like...
Did you finish all your topics in one class?
Yes, I did, so right now, I am in the geometry portion. And not a lot of people are in that, in the class that I'm in right now, and my teacher is even like shocked about that.
How'd that make you feel, being able to see that progress?
It actually made me feel really good.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's different competitions, we're, we're starting, like in pilot year, we're working with it, we're starting to figure out different ways we can make competitive, different reward systems, um, different ways to help engage a little bit more. I also asked them, my students, what some good incentives would be for completing the program, 'cause it is a math class, we do have students who sit and struggle to, to work, um, so we wanna get them to work. And stickers, candies, grades were, which, it is a grade in the gradebook, we do put some grades in for the, the topic completion, you are indeed doing work and learning math. Um, it is not a major part of your grade by any means, but it's there. They wanted stickers, they wanted room decorations, um, food and candy. Gets our, gets our kids to do it, and also, you can see that some of them did answer, when I completed, I wanna do more. I like that you can learn new things. Even today in class, I had twenty minutes of Alex and was ready to move on, and the whole class was like, can you just stay on Alex, please? So. Anything you wanna add?
Um, I just wanna say that it's like really easy to stay focused on it, too. It's not, well, for me, I don't get distracted from it, because I actually like the program, and it's easier for me to understand what I'm doing. And it's easier for me to understand it, because I have to work through it, and it also helps me work through it.
How does this, how does Alex make you feel less stressed than iXL?
Because iXL, we would have to answer a certain amount of questions, like get to like a hundred, and then, if you get one question wrong, it bumps you down, like, let's say you're at seventy, and it'll bump you down to like fifty, and that just like makes you so upset, and you just don't wanna do it anymore.
That makes sense.
Do you guys have any questions? Anything else you can answer?
Is this a multi-year, multi-year program? Do they keep progressing?
I'm looking at Dr. Gibson here, I, we have a what, three-year license, four-year license?
Okay, so it is.
Yes, um, but this is the pilot year, our first year doing it.
Okay.
So, we're hoping, hoping to expand it, um, but it's, it's working great so far.
Good.
Overall.
Sounds like a nice program.
It, and we're, we're still learn, like I said, we're learning to adapt, and what's gonna make more kids feel comfortable, um, I actually subbed in a different class that uses Alex a few weeks ago, and she has a bingo chart on her board. And every topic you complete, you get to fill out a bingo square. So it's a topic for, so it, it's not like done instantly, but it
No, but it's
It's a, it's a run in bingo, so I'm like, ooh, that's kinda cool.
Yeah, feedback, yeah, that's, that's good.
So, when they finish this, uh, class, what is the next step? Where do these kids go next year?
There are actually quite like hundreds of these courses on Alex, um, it goes, it's kindergarten through college. So, we look at the curriculum, which is why I asked my kids, I don't even know if I can go back. That's why I asked them, how, what's the level of hardness, like, how do you feel? So Alex gives you the curriculum, it says these topics are covered in their courses. So when we got the program, we sat down with our tech department and said, I think my classes should be in the pre-algebra class. Vika's teacher said, I think my classes should be in this RTI class. And we kinda went from there. There is that, that initial knowledge check, that, that first test that they give you, it comes back and, um, gives you a percentage of what's known. And the program directors themselves, when we went through training, said if the students are below an eighteen percent or above an eighty percent, you need to move them up or down. So our courses that we have our students in are actually sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level.
So my question is, it's pre-algebra, so if they complete all of this, do they go to algebra?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can move them up, yes.
And it's all in Alex?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so that is the class.
Perfect. And we, as the teachers, um, it took a while to figure it out, but we, as the teachers, do know how to manually do that ourselves now.
Alex is a supplement to your instruction.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, there are, it is totally usable to be an actual course, a lot of colleges do that, but ours is purely supplemental, an hour a week.
Okay.
Yeah. And the goal is that it's actually done in class, not outside, it's never gonna be assigned for homework, it's not expected, the students work on it outside.
So I sense that it's a way for students who are struggling with certain concepts to get one-on-one kind of work for concepts, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's gonna boost the confidence, it's gonna give you those extra little fill-the-gap moments, that spiral review, 'cause those knowledge checks are not gonna let you forget. Other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I'll let Mr. Baker unplug his computer, I don't know.
Vika, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, there's no public comment this evening. Under the President's Report, um, today being Secretary's Day or Minister of Assistance Day, I would just like to thank all the clerical workers in the district. I had a wise man tell me once, when I started in this business a hundred years ago, it feels like, that who runs the school are the clerical secretaries and the janitorial staff. If you don't believe, it's staying in this business a while, 'cause that's exactly what it is, so my hat's off to them, I wanna thank them for everything they do on a daily basis for us, and especially for Jennifer Riva, who is the Board Secretary. Okay, moving on to finance, uh, a motion of approval for the bills and payroll for LaSalle-Prutonge High School.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisania?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. A motion of approval for, um, the bills and payroll for LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes, a motion of approval for a payroll report.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under seven point two, a motion of approval for the financial records as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krazanian?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Under correspondence, we have TIF reimbursements from the city of Peru, TIF two, sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, ninety-four cents. TIF three, eleven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. And TIF four, a twenty-five thousand dollars, coming to a total TIF reimbursement of a hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Under board committee reports, uh, nine point one, building grounds committee, Mr. Ferrari.
Uh, building and grounds committee met yesterday at, uh, three thirty PM. Um, one of the first topics was, uh, bid recommendations regarding roofing repairs and replacement. It was, uh, bids regarding the, uh, main building and the east gym roof. And, uh, there was also a separate, uh, bid for masonry restorations and lintel replacements. And those are action items, uh, for the board tonight. The bids that were recommended were approved unanimously by the committee. The early childhood playground is in its final stages and, uh, moving forward. The, uh, there's continuing to work on designs for the new agricultural building. There is a, uh, an upgrade for the, uh, fire safety system, uh, that's being reviewed currently regarding the auto shop and the Dolan Building. They are not currently part of the system that's used in the, uh, east building and the main building. And, uh, that's, that's going to be rectified in the future, uh, possibly in the next fiscal year. We're also looking at, uh, recommendations for, uh, light fixtures for the building exteriors. And that's another project that it's in early stages and it's probably something that won't be done until the next fiscal year also, but it's something in the works. As far as the current projects, the North Bleacher motor mount replacement was completed over the, uh, spring break, Easter break. Also, the installation of the new retractable basketball hoops in Selette Gym, that, that's been accomplished. The demolition of the, uh, the old dishwasher room near the cafeteria has been completed, that's phase one of the remodeling, that's gonna be turned into the sip and savor.
Store.
Dishwasher room.
Yep.
All right. The Dolan Building elevator is finally done. That's been on, waiting for final inspection, I think on that for, for months now. And, uh, they are in the process of replacing one of the chillers, uh, in the, uh, the main boiler house.
Chiller after, does that have to work with air conditioning?
Yep.
Did I tell you what, it should be replaced. Sorry.
Wow.
I thought it was electricity.
And, um, the superintendent advised us that the, uh, the four-year inspection visit from the, uh, regional office of expectation was also completed. And I'm sure he'll talk more about that in his report. And, uh, that covered all the top, topics we had.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. The finance committee report, Mrs. Taliani?
Yeah, I realized Mr. Murbach left, I was like, yes! So, uh, we met yesterday afternoon as well, we went over the monthly financials, we are seventy-five percent through the fiscal year. Uh, transportation services are down due to the state's pending payment. The amended budget will be approved to put on public display next month at the May board meeting. We received the update on the series twenty twenty-five with a nice deposit, seven point four million dollars. Uh, deposit in the investment accounts for the allocated facility projects. We were updated on the twenty-five, twenty-six health vision and dental insurance rates. And, um, that's an action item for renewing those. We also talked about the bid recommendations that Mr. Ferrari discussed, we recommend those action items as well. Uh, Dr. Robleski told, we needed to, uh, change the ag program activity account to the FFA program activity account, just a matter of, of semantics, changing the names there. We recommend approving that as well as the paid holiday schedule. Um, he also informed us that we got a happy check in the mail from the city of Peru for eighty-five thousand dollars with surplus funds from their downtown TIF, which, um, eighty thousand of it will be, um, allocated to the scoreboard activity fund. When five thousand will go to the soda fund, which supports and enhances student needs. So, that is all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Taliani.
Thank you.
And I, in my notes, I did realize that Mr. Murbach was not gonna be here.
Yeah, well, hey. Thanks for that update.
The minister reports, superintendent report, Dr. Robleski, thank you, Mrs. Sarver. Uh, we're in the final stretch of the school year, we have five weeks left, um, for our seniors, if you were to ask them, it's much less than that. Uh, graduation is right around the corner, uh, so we're already, you know, we've got senior, uh, awards, uh, tomorrow and, and graduation will be right around, right around the corner. We're very excited that we have, um, uh, several, actually, uh, five, six students that we're gonna be sending to Senator Resin's Spring Youth Advisory Council. That'll be down at the Omy State Capitol on April thirtieth. Um, so that's gonna be just a great opportunity for our students to be able to, um, offer their voice, um, as part of a larger panel. And to assist to be, experience the political process, uh, as well, and so we're, we're really excited about the, uh, the students' experience. Uh, Mrs. Cushing and I, a couple of weeks ago, sat in on probably one of the best presentations. Um, that was a program proposal, uh, that we had. Um, we were very familiar with the sip and savor program, uh, it's highly regarded in the school and in the community. Um, Mr. Thomas, who teaches in, in one of our other life skills, uh, programs, um, kind of inspired by the sip and savor program. He and his students put together a, a proposal to create the darn good cookie store. And they provided Mrs. Cushing and I with, uh, some samples and they were darn good cookies. Uh, and so, uh, we're, we're greenlighting them to do that, but there's a couple of things that we have to get done though, and I'm working with the health department. We have to, uh, put an application in or a, a written request for some variances. They intend to use the kitchen in the, the apartment classroom that we have. Because not a commercial setup, there are several variances that we have to, to apply for. And so I've been in communication with them, I've got the list of what I need to do, and so we'll, we'll get that to them. Um, and we wanna, we wanna get this off and running here in time for the, the new school year. We did share with Mr. Thomas in his class that at, at some point, we want them to come to the board meeting, uh, to be able to talk more about their program and to, to bring some samples, uh, along as well. But they are very, very, very excited. We've already heard updates on the budget amendments, um, that will be, uh, presented next month, the fiscal year twenty-six district budget. Uh, planning is well underway, uh, Mrs. Doos has been, uh, meet, meeting with division chairs, building administrators, streamlined the process this year, utilizing Microsoft Teams, so we're using less paper in the process as well, so I've been getting some good feedback, uh, from our, our department chairs on that. Um, and then as, um, Mr. Ferrari, uh, alluded to, we completed our four-year ROE, uh, compliance visit. It, it's a very labor-intensive process, um, it's, almost all of it's online, but there's so much, uh, verification, double checking, there's files that have to be, uh, pulled. Um, and a lot of coordination and collaboration that goes along with that. And I want to commend, uh, Mrs. Riva, who was the overseer for the, uh, the process. And we had a really good exit interview, um, with, uh, Mr. Dvorak and Mr. Myers, and we only had a, just, there was only kind of two areas that we had to make some corrections on, they were very, very minor, and those have already been, been completed, so we've attained our, our full compliance. Uh, lastly, we had, um, it was a busy month for FOIA requests. Um, we had thirteen requests, I will say though, that ten of them were hit, every school district across the state um, received these FOIA requests, it was done, um, we, we don't know who it is, um, it just was an email address, but it appears to have been done on AI. And so there were ten different requests, instead of just asking in one time, uh, we had ten different requests that they were, basically they just, they wanted the list of our vendors. So, it, it's a simple process, but just, it's just the times it has to be, that, that Mrs. Riva has to put into putting it together. We sent them all of our annual statement affairs, which lists our, our listed vendors. Uh, we had a FOIA request from, uh, Mrs. Mary Beth Wilson from the News Tribune, we responded to her request, uh, within the, the Disney timeframe. We had a request from Sarah Jeans from an employee data analytics, just looking for employee roster information. And then, um, Mr. Owen Wang, this is a set of FOIA requests that we, all districts across the state received back in the fall. We responded to every single one of them, we got a kickback request saying, hey, we never got the response for this particular request. And so Jen was able to go back into the emails that we sent and basically re-forwarded the email that we had sent, um, the last time. The frustrating piece with these though, I have to say, is that you rarely, well, when you see person, someone who kind of generates a name, you, you typically get a response, Mr. Wang, we never got a response, and then this one that was generated by, by AI, there was never any affirmation that there was even, that was even received. So that's, that's kind of the frustrating piece, you know, with some of these, but we complied with all of them. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Dr. Robleski.
Yeah, the, the FOIA requests you're talking about, obviously I saw a lot of these, uh, as well, and it's interesting because it's speculation on my part, but I thought they made ten requests as opposed to one request.
Oh, they did, it was ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to one.
Oh, yeah.
A- as a way of avoiding an argument under the statute that it was voluminous.
Yeah.
In terms of the volume of paper and the amount of work that has to be done to do it, so I think, I thought they were trying to avoid that, but see that as it may, all it does is give you more time. It also was bordering on unduly burdensome, which is very rarely used, uh, tool in the statute uh, because the state disfavors that, but I personally thought they were getting pretty close on, on that and I know some schools did avail themselves of that, so. We'll see.
Thanks, Walt. Thank you, Walt. Principal's report, Mrs. Cushing.
Good evening, um, I have several updates in my report there, but I'll just highlight some of the big ones that have been keeping us busy, um, over the last month or so. Uh, we conducted our third quarter, uh, data meetings, um, which is a pretty big deal here in our building, we have all of our division chairs um, and leadership team that come together, um, and discuss our SMART goals, um, and we're certainly maybe not going to hit them perfectly, but we have made huge, huge strides um, on both of those, so I'm really, really proud of our, our team and, um, all of the different programs that we've been putting in. Uh, also at that meeting, we talked about yet another program that we could put in place to help our students, um, be more successful. And so we have started the process of getting some feedback from the staff, just to make sure that we're not like missing anything from anyone's perspective. Um, and then we'll be ready to share that with you at next month's, uh, board meeting, uh, and that's called an academic success program. So we're very excited about this and, and I'll give you that little teaser for what's coming next month, um, from, from me. Um, as far as, uh, that meeting goes, um, that also leads us into some other meetings that were going on, we had the handbook committee meeting, I see it's on the agenda for your first reading. Uh, but just to let you know, we had a lot of, of various stakeholders in our building, uh, participate in that and give lots of feed, excuse me, feedback. Uh, we've had student input, lo- lots of people, so, um, I'm looking forward to, to, uh, seeing how that moves forward there. The other thing that we've been working on, which has taken up a, a, a lot of our, our, our efforts, is the ACT and pre-ACT testing. And, uh, it was a new test, new systems, lots of things to learn, but we were very successful at implementing it, our students showed up, we did some makeups already today. Um, and we, uh, have almost a hundred percent of our students, which is really, um, impressive, so I'm, I'm very pleased with, with how that is going. The other things I was gonna share with you is just some celebrations that we've had, so we had the honors, uh, society ceremony at the end of March. And we had, um, so almost a record number of students in that, uh, sixty-five students were, were able to receive that, that great honor, so wonderful, wonderful, uh, program. And tomorrow, we have even more awards to give away, uh, so if you are not, uh, busy tomorrow at seven PM, um, you can come see our senior award ceremony where we have well over fifty different, um, uh, awards and, and scholarships to give out, so exciting times as we wrap up the end of the school year. Anyone have any questions about my report or?
Thank you, Mrs. Cushing. The athletic director's report, Mr. Hans is not here tonight, his report is in your packet. Area career center director, Dr. Ley.
The guy who got the elevator fixed.
Otis Junior. We always call him O- Otis Junior.
So I'm gonna start with, uh, the area career center. Uh, we celebrated women's history month with, uh, several students that are participating in programming. A lot of times, uh, we like to highlight the students that are in non-traditional programs for their gender, so the students that are in welding and building transit, that sort of thing, so. Aurora Medina, uh, she posted a lot of things on social media on the area career center site and that sort of thing, so if you wanna see that, go to the LaSalle Peru Area Career Center on Facebook and see what's going on there. Uh, we'll be holding a signing day for the area career center students, and it's gonna be next Friday. We're gonna take a look at the accomplishments of students that are taking a new job, that's gonna be related to something that they, a course that they took at the career center. Whether or not they're going on to post-secondary education or entering an apprenticeship program. So far, there's fifty-one students that have filled out the form, that say they've gotten a job or they've signed up for college or that sort of thing, so we're going to do that next, uh, Friday. It's going to be first and second block for us, so first and fourth period, we're, we're gonna recognize those students. Students that are in the afternoon session, the LP students, they're gonna be in second block for that. Uh, CAD students from the career center and then also Ottawa, they visited the Ottawa Dental Lab, uh, to see what's going on with that and the way that they create, you know, things like crowns and that sort of thing. And then also they went to Black Brothers to see, that company, if you've never been there, to see what goes on there, they actually build equipment that applies uh, veneers onto, uh, like tables and countertops and that sort of thing, so they build the equipment that does that. So they have a really great design team, so it was a really great fit for the CAD students to be able to see the design to production. So that was pretty cool for them. Uh, students competed in the welding competition at IVCC, this one's a really proud moment, you guys should be really proud of this. So the, the ca- the high school students participated in the college level, some of them participated in the college level, um, competition, because they take the dual credit classes. Uh, they placed, there's two, two areas, there's SMAW and GMAW, the type of process. They placed first in the GMAW and second in the SMAW for the college level students, and they placed first in the high school level for SMAW. That was a really great accomplishment for the students, the career center. Um, we sent out an interest survey, uh, one of the things I wanted to do when I first started here was do that, to kind of see what the ninth through eleventh grade students were interested in when it comes to programming at the career center. And that several of the other area career centers in the state do that. Sorry. So eight hundred and thirty students responded in ninth and eleventh grade for our participating schools. And the top six programs, four of them are ones that we already offer, welding, CNA, criminal justice, early childhood education, culinary arts and EMT. So EMT is actually one that I've, we've been talking about, I know Dwayne had been talking about it with Robin, about whether or not that should be something we offer. Very high on the interest level and it's something that she's interested in, so when we have our May board meeting, uh, we're gonna discuss some of that and I'm gonna present what the, what the report said. See where that goes. Um, culinary program, they created some amazing spaghetti dinners for the track fundraiser, and they shared the proceeds for that, it was very successful. I know that, uh, Lori was thinking that she was gonna, uh, have plenty of leftovers and she was gonna freeze it, and I know with like five minutes to spare, she was scraping the bottom of the pan of the extra twenty pounds of sauce that she made, so, um, they were pretty excited about that.
That's why you go early. That's why you go early. I plan ahead.
I could tell you, I was, I was there a little bit early and I was gonna buy some, and she was so worried about all the number of cards. And she was so worried about all the number of cars that were out there. I'm like, you know what? I'm just going to let you guys sell my portion. And the last thing I want to report is I rode on the elevator and I made it to the meeting. Any questions?
So we know your elevator goes to the top floor.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Ley.
Thank you.
Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I've just been hearing all these kind of end of year activities that are either happened recently or are coming up. Obviously, we'll be busy promoting and live streaming things like senior awards and choir concerts and all those things that we have on the agenda coming up. Just a little thing to look ahead, next week, Dr. Roblesky and I are going to be traveling to Springfield for a seminar with IESA all about developing a strategic communication plan, which I'm really hopeful that that'll put us in a really good position for kind of how we, how we plan for what we do next year and really have some nice focus for all our activities. Especially knowing that it's going to be the lead into a big transition year for the district. And then on the foundation side of things, we completed trivia night. Thanks to all of you who came out and participated or donated anything. All the little discounts or just came out and had a fun night and answered some trivia questions. And then the next piece, rather than asking for anything this time, the foundation is giving back. So on May ninth, that's Friday, the foundation members and I will be out under the awning of the sled gym doors, cooking lunch for all of our faculty and staff. So always, it's been an event for the past three or four years and I think it's been really well received. So that's just on the horizon as we bring the year to a close.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, under new business, eleven point one, the emotional approval of proclamation recognizing teacher appreciation week, May fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point two, and a motion of approval to reward Union Roofing, Chinoa, Illinois. The contract for the following projects, main building roofing replacement, base bid A for one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And B, east gym roof repair, alternate bid A one, forty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. An emotional approval to reward Autobomb Company, Morton, Illinois. The contract for the following projects, A, masonry restoration, base bid B for sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. And B, lintel replacement, unit price number one for one thousand, three hundred dollars per lintel.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
I learned what a lintel was.
I'm still on the chillers. Eleven point four, and the emotional approval for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six paid holiday schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point five, and a motion of approval to rename the ag program activity account to FFA program activity account.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point six, and emotional approval resolution, twenty twenty-five dash eight, declaring surplus equipment, which is the ACC tired machine.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point seven, and emotional approval of the updated Title I school-wide plan.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point eight, the emotional approval for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six consolidated district plan.
So moved. What is the purpose of the consolidated district plan?
Don't want to answer that?
No. Because I just did.
Yeah, exactly. That would be my answer.
Okay.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Here's the hoop. Jump through it. That's what it is.
Eleven point nine, a motion of approval for the final twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district calendar.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point one zero is a review of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student handbook, which is the first reading.
Lots of changes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll have a policy committee meeting. Not yet.
Yeah.
Lots of changes. A lot of them. Good work.
Eleven point one one, and a motion of approval for the following requirement, retirement request with regret. Mr. David Kelty, librarian, conclusion of the twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point one two, and a motion of approval for the following resignations. Mrs. Becky Johnson, assistant cheer coach, effective March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Will Zukowski, student counselor and sponsor, effective the conclusion of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Mr. Matt Lambert, assistant football coach, effective April first, twenty twenty-five. And Dr. Christopher Gibson, associate principal of teaching and learning, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point one three, and a motion of approval for the following FMLA request. Mrs. Addie Castellic, beginning April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the remainder of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. She'll be using accumulated leave time to cover her leave.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point one four, and a motion of approval for the following appointments. Mr. Matt Lambert, assistant golf coach, effective for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Replace Mr. Jim Shervany and Mr. Nolan Keeney, head girls wrestling coach, effective for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, which is a new position.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Eleven point one five, and a motion of approval for the Cavaliers request for an overnight stay on June twenty-four, twenty, excuse me, twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at the Embassy Suites in Peoria for their summer pants.
Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasania?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?